Forty-eight hours, because I know we have folks out there requesting their recording. Can y'all hear us all right? It's supposed to be coming through those speakers, but can you, Alan? I talk too loud as it is. Oh, Bob, Bob, Bob. What are we gonna do, Bob?
I told him to behave.
I know. I didn't expect it to. All right. Can we actually turn up the speakers for him? Let's see what happens, and y'all let us know. The way I talk, it'll start screaming. Yeah, because it gets, yeah, it gets too damn loud. Don't mean to, it just happens. And I guess you two, when you're so soft spoken, you're probably gonna have to really lean into that mic if you talk at all.
I'll put my principal's voice on, it'll carry.
We don't have to worry about you.
It'll carry.
All right, Alan, how's that back there? Is that better? Jeff? All right. All right, let's see here. I don't show exactly six o'clock yet, so let's give it time. All right, I show that it is 6:00 P.M. We will bring this special session, which is a public hearing of Somerville County Commissioners' Court to order. Let the record show that Jeff Harris, Richard Talavera, Danny Chambers, Tammy Ray, and Wade Bush are all here. We are in a discussion with the hospital board. Ron, I'll leave it to you to call your group to order.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's also six o'clock. Today is Tuesday, March 28th, 2023. We're in the District Court Room of Somerville County Courthouse. I'll call this meeting to order of the Somerville County Hospital District Board. Let the record show that we do have all members of the board present, and we are here for a meeting with Somerville County Commissioners' Court to discuss transfer of Glen Rose Medical Center patients by the Somerville County Fire Department.
And so, everybody out there in this whole group knows, we've had several small meetings over the course of 14, 13, 15 months. If I say anything wrong, Michael will jump in here and let me know what I say wrong. But as we're all aware, before the court can make any decisions and go forward with anything, the whole group needs to hear it as a whole, what they can vote on and can't vote on. Because you well know, if we have two or more, we get three in the room, then we get in trouble real quick. So, there's been many, many discussions. I know it's been back and forth. And Ron, you correct me if I'm wrong. I know in some of the meetings, I wasn't always there with you. I think, you know, the county supposedly had talked about supplying ambulance at one time. The county had talked about supplying a driver and ambulance, things like that. But it's just been all discussion up until we get the whole court. And I think Michael's got a presentation that he would like to make to both sides, and that may go over many items. I think Michael feels like we might could be able to do what is requested by the hospital with our current staffing and equipment, things like that. But at this time, Michael, if you're ready, are you ready? Are you good?
I'm fine with that, Judge, thank you.
Well, that'll come on public. And if we don't mind, and I know y'all will be, let's just be respectful of him while he's talking, and y'all have your chance to rebut any issues that you feel like may need to be addressed. Is that fair? Thank you. Is that fair?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, Michael, you got the floor.
So... So, as Jeff said, we've had probably a little over a year. We've been working on happy meetings to resolve this issue. Started out kind of during the middle of COVID, and has been since patient transfer. The last meeting we had was on March 14th. The takeaway, that was kind of the point that we were looking for some resolution to this. So, the takeaway resolution from that meeting was that EMS, or Somerville County EMS, would need nine additional personnel to be able to do transfer to Glen Rose Medical Center. So, they take to the court the request for nine additional people. So, that led me, I'm a numbers person in analytics. So, I went and pulled the budget off the Somerville County website of kind of what the staffing requirements are now. And some of these are assumptions, correct me in this. But this is the budget off the website. I assume since we were requesting nine new additional people, that the current budget status isn't that, that there wasn't room in the current budget to accommodate any of those nine people. So, that's an assumption on my part. So, I pulled off of the county records, November 22nd, or 2022 to February of '23. EMS has averaged 1.9 calls a day. On the fire side, they've averaged 0.17 calls per day. And the rest of these calculations are just how I got to where I got. It's basically FTE, or full-time equivalent. So, that's one individual, 40 hours a week, full-time. So, that's kind of what leads to the next one. Scenario one, a lot of times we're told there's only one crew available at the station. So, what I did is just back the budget into, we've got the fire chief, who's listed out separately in the budget. We have clerks. I'm assuming that's two individuals. That's an annual budget of $105,425, which comes out to about $52,000 for each one of the clerks that are at the station. And two paramedics. If that's the case, I'm assuming one crew is typically two paramedics, or a combination thereof. If we only have one crew at the station, we would be paying that crew $151,000, is what the budget, if you extrapolate that out. So, that's 24-hour coverage with two paramedics, which I don't think is the case. So, that's kind of saying the question is, you know, is that truly what we're paying? I don't think we are. Scenario number two is that we've got two crews on. That would be a chief. You've got your two clerks, as I understand, are certified either EMT or paramedic. So, they do have some sort of certification and can run a call on the ambulances. Same thing there, it's, you know, $52,000 a piece there. If we're good, four paramedics, that comes out to about $74,000 per paramedic that's on. That would give you seven crew members during the day, from Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00 roughly, and four crew members after hours. And with that, just put some of the questions that come to my mind in analyzing this. The pay is kind of in question at $77,000. That's would be a little high. I know, you know, I will say EMS is just like healthcare right now, and we're having to pay more for all positions, actually. But with seven crew members there during the day, from 8:00 to 5:00, the question is, why can't we do transfers at least 8:00 to 5:00 or offer to do? So, to date, we've had no real offer to do any transfers. It's unless they're, I guess, critical, and care package apply. You know, it's two people per truck, you've got seven people there, you only have three trucks. So, that would leave, if all three got on calls, that would leave one person at the station. At the same time, not long ago, I'll give a little background too, because I've done EMS, I've actually been an EMT for, I guess, 20 going on 30 years now. And I, up until recently, still do EMS and fire. As I've gotten busier as the CEO of the hospital, I don't do it so much. But I've worked the box since I was 18 years old, so. But Hood County EMS put this ad out on Facebook a year or two back, and they're hiring paramedics for $54,000 to $65,000 with a $3,000 sign-on plan. Currently, Hood County is who's doing our transfers. They're able to staff an extra truck and provide a truck to Somerville County to do the transfers for Somerville County. So, that tells me that they're able to staff at that pay grade. Scenario number two is three crew members, or three crews, sorry. Again, your chief, your two clerks, and that would be six paramedics around the clock. That comes out to about $49,000. That's probably more in the more realistic range, if you've got a mix of EMTs and paramedics. It's probably a little bit higher than that. That's just, I just kind of did the numbers in the different staffing scenarios to see kind of where we, with the budget that's in place, where we are. That would give you nine crew members, 8:00 to 5:00. It would give you six crew members after hours. And some of the other questions, I guess, just from my management side, looking at it, we're paying clerical, two clerical positions, and they're making almost as much as the paramedics are making at Hood County. With 1.9 calls a day and one fire call a week. But there's more. I mean, I'm making assumptions there, I don't know what all these people do, so I carefully speak to them. But with six crew on at night, that would give us enough to staff all three ambulances. If one's on a transfer, you've still got two ambulances available in-house to do the calls. And then, just some generalizations as we've gone through this. 2019, Somerville County EMS was doing all the transfers to the hospital. From 2019 to 2023, the budget, the personnel budget for EMS has increased by 58.84%, but now they're not doing transfers. Potential revenue, we actually pulled the transfers that we have sent from the hospital, looked at the mileage. We base it off of Medicare flat-rate billing, and healthcare typically, we base anything off of Medicare, because it's typically the one, Medicaid's the lowest payer, but Medicare is a primary pays vessel, and it's commercial. Just estimated in a year, there's been about $279,000 in lost revenue from out to the transfers to the hospital. So, this is money that the EMS could make by doing transfers for us. There is a little bit of question currently, the practice, I guess, of the EMS is they turn it over to collection, or they build the insurance company, they receive what the insurance company pays, but they do not further collect after that. This results in loss of revenue, and it is a concern, because I know in our contracts, that would actually be a violation of our payer contract. And in the case of Medicare, it could more or less be illegal. They expect you to collect a deductible amount, and are making every best effort to collect that deductible amount. And if you don't, you're actually in violation of the contract. One of the other issues we face is the delay in transfers is hindering Glen Rose Medical Center from getting our Level 4 trauma designation. We lost several years ago our Level 4 designation. That's been one of my big pushes to the nursing staff, is to get that designation back. So, when we have a trauma patient in the ER, and the decision is made to transfer that patient, roughly a 30 minutes from the decision to get that person on an ambulance headed to another location. So, we're having to rely on Hood County to come down and do the transfers. As many of you know, the growth of Hood County has improved probably more so than Somerville County right now. They are getting busier. Conde EMS did our transfers for over 10 years. They ran, I was actually part of that back when. They ran a four-man crew, two boxes. They were able to, there's about 8,000, back then, there's probably 7,000 people in Conde, that they were able to do all the transfers and cover Conde with two trucks. If you look at most of the national statistics on rural EMS, it's one truck to about every 8,000 to 12,000 people is kind of the standards that are out there. And then, Somerville County EMS was actually able to do transfers from 2018 to about 2020. We had no trauma to get the patients transferred. Currently, Hood County is doing our transfers. They're doing them free of charge. So, there's obviously money to be made in transfers, since they're sending a truck all the way down to Somerville County to transfer a patient. And I will say, we do have an arrangement that we are payer of last resort. So, if it's a self-pay patient, we will pay the hospital, we will openly pay for that bill if they're unable to get any funding. And we would do that arrangement with any EMS service that provides. And as it stands right now, with Hood County doing the transfers, Somerville County residents will receive a bill, and they will be taken to collections and probably turned over, I don't know if they turn it over to the credit bureau or not. But with them doing the transfers, they will receive a full bill and will be actually collected on that bill. So, that will change our approach as well. So, those are kind of my, in review of the budget, mine, I guess.
On the, Michelle did some research for me, you know, on that. Right now, Somerville County residents do not go into collections and get billed. And it was like, what, 8/31 of '09 is when that was taken to Commissioners' Court? And they've got the audio where it does discuss that, you know, outside district is billed, inside district at that time. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, or legal or illegal. I'm not taking the stance. The Commissioners' Court at that time chose not to push it past the insurance billing in '09.
I would just recommend you might want to look at your contract. And it could be different with EMS. I just know the hospitals, if we don't take it to collections and collect on it, we're actually in violation of that contract, and with Medicare, because it actually can be...
So, the reason I brought that up was, as you well know, we just have to go back to the court to discuss how we do that. And if they decide to do that, and then we just have to go from there. Because if the previous Commissioners' Court did make a decision that we wouldn't bill beyond insurance to local residents. But that can be addressed, and we can look at it, we can talk about it, see what can or can't be done. If it's illegal, we need to change it.
Yeah. I'm sure we've done a lot of things. With the deductibles now, and the higher deductibles of like, and that's what's, I will tell you, on the EMS side, that's what's making EMS tougher, because back when somebody had a $2,000 deductible, the game, I say game, but you took them to the ER, EMS waited and held their bill to let the hospital go ahead and bill. The deductibles met, then EMS would drop their bill and get paid by the insurance in full.
There you go.
Well, now that you're, a lot of your deductible plans are like $10,000. You can't. But the insurance company is expecting you to collect that $10,000 out of pocket before they begin paying. So, that's why they require that you've got to make every, every, every to collect that.
So, something that we may have to readdress as the court makes a decision, however they want to decide to move forward. And I need everybody to know, when I'm speaking here, John can testify. I'm speaking for Danny Chambers, all right? I'm not speaking for this court. I don't make decisions for this court. They got their own vote. So, when my loud mouth overloads my butt, don't blame it on these people, okay? It's me. So, that would have to be readdressed. And I imagine there's some things that he stated that y'all would probably have to rebut. Who would imagine, except y'all? Kind of if you don't want to address it, or don't address it, or...
You start your thing back over, so we can try to... Maybe.
What do you know, Eddie? Ready to go. Ah, good. Thank you.
So, let me just address one thing upfront. We're not Somerville County EMS, we're Somerville County Fire Department. It takes five people to staff an engine for a structured fire. We have six people on staff. So, just to be clear, we're not talking about an ambulance service. Texas EMS has five ambulances in service. They only do ambulances. They only take care of patients. So, please do not confuse one thing for the other. The only thing on the table here is, should we do transfers? And it's up to the Commissioners' Court to make that decision, because there is some risk that we could have a truck out of town, and we have a wreck. This past weekend, we had two people injured on a motorcycle. That takes two ambulances, four people. And if it was a car, that leaves two people to extricate them. So, let's not get bogged down on looking at just EMS. Let's look at what do we really need to, what really needs to be decided there? And that's who's going to do the hospital transfers. I'm a hos, I'm, you know, the doctor's my friend. We do a lot of business together. I have no, Michael's my friend. We do a lot of business. I've worked with Ron for a long time. This is not about me against you. It's about the hospital needing transfer service, and whether or not the County Commissioners' Court wants to take on that responsibility. The billing, we purposely keep our employees out of the billing realm. We give them a parameter. We make sure that they're doing everything that's required to collect what can be collected. We pay a billing company to manage that. We don't manage the money. We stay out of politics, because we want our people, we have, have, most people, I happen to have volunteers and employees here tonight, not on duty, but here. So, we want to just serve the public, and we want to do it right. We had cases during COVID, which was a very different era, that we were really strapped. And, you know, my wife reminded me this morning that I spent a lot of sleepless nights standing by for the ambulances to work as a paramedic, because that's the only way they could take the transfers. We're not in a pandemic anymore. But understand, just as with the hospital, the fire department cannot schedule our 911 calls. We'd like to. We'd like to be able to, you know, run a schedule, and we do transfers during this time, and we do 911 calls during this time. We can't do that. So, there's times when six people's not enough. That's why we have volunteers to back them up. Of our volunteers, a handful of them do have certifications, but they're not, there's, we, I have a hard time getting people to volunteer to start with. I've been doing this for 36 years. I have a lot invested in this community, in this service. And this is the worst relationship I have ever seen between the hospital and our paramedics, because of attitudes. And I'm going to say it's on both sides. I'm not trying to claim it's all on one side. We need to come, we need to resolve this, whatever it is. We need to resolve it, where we're not making individual decisions on how to, whether or not we're going to take a transfer. That needs to be a decision that's made, and it's put in black and white for our employees, so they're not put on the spot. So, there's not words. And again, I'm saying it goes both ways. I'm not claiming that we're innocent. Well, I'm innocent, but the rest of them, no, really. We need to do what's right for the community. We need to do what's right for the community. I'm not going to address all of the pay stuff. What he had there is skewed. We're competitive in our pay. If Texas EMS is paying $65,000 for a paramedic, and we're paying that same amount, we're paying somebody that does a lot more than that. There's a lot more we do than, again, we're a fire department. We're doing stuff all the time. These guys have duties, daily duties they have to do. They have training that they have to perform. They can't, we don't have the luxury, we don't have the budget. Yes, Michael, we are on the edge of making the budget. We don't have the budget to pay people to train on their own, you know, outside of shift. So, we have to try to do that during shift. There are occasions where special classes are coming up, and we'll do that, certainly. We have some money in the budget for that, but not really enough to really do it. So, these guys, we expect them to train every shift. We expect them to exercise every shift, because there's, in our business, there's a lot of people that have heart attacks and die because they don't take care of themselves. And then, you know, you go from zero to 60 and nothing flat, and that puts a lot of stress on the heart. So, we require them. We don't ask them, we don't recommend that they do. We require them to do transfers. So, just understand, you know, I asked the court and I asked the hospital, that y'all figure it out, and quit dragging us through the mud, because it's, you know, this business of social media, that's not the place to air stuff out, and everybody's got an opinion, and it's just like a butt over. Nobody wants to hear about it, right? Can I say that in court?
He did.
Oh, he did.
He did.
I'm sorry. So, there's really nothing for us to dispute or debate here. We would like to take this presentation back. And Brian, don't let me speak to you if you want to get up here and talk. But, and look at it, and see, is there something we need to look at? But I can tell you, we are, there's been salary surveys after salary surveys performed, and we are not. If you go further west, they make a lot more money, just as a paramedic, because they have a harder time getting them, and they have different circumstances where they're able to get more money, because they're further away from hospitals. It is what it is, folks. I just ask that you figure it out. Get us through it, and let's see if I had any notes here I really wanted to talk about. I don't think we do. So, yeah, it's not, we shouldn't be discussing people's livelihood. We shouldn't be discussing what we do, you know. I'm sure we could go to the hospital and look at where people are getting paid and not having to perform work all the time, and not putting hands on patients, right? I mean, that's the business we're in. We got grant writers that are constantly trying to get more money, so the taxpayers are not burdened with all that. You know, that's what, these clerks he's talking about, that's a lot of what they do. They also have to handle supplies. They also, there's a lot of stuff that's done. We do a good balancing act with what we have to work with. And if a decision is for us to do transfers, we'll do what we're instructed to do, because we serve at the pleasure of the court. But know that there is that risk, that if we knock out one truck to do transfers, then you have a chance, you know. Now, if we have that incident with two patients, now we got two ambulances, and that's all. And that's not really fair to the people that have done the work. Any questions for me?
Y'all have any questions at all?
I would just ask Steve if, like, a lot of the accidents, the automobile accidents or motorcycle accidents, that sort of thing, a lot of times are serious enough that you're going to call an air ambulance anyway, are you not?
That's right. And when we do that, we have trashed our ambulance typically, because there's blood everywhere, there's vomit everywhere, supplies are depleted during that time. So, we take that truck out typically, out of service for just as much time as if we were taking somebody somewhere else, or bringing them to the hospital.
Okay. And this came through social media, but a statement by someone who supposedly knew that every time there is an accident like that, do you just dispatch two ambulances? That's what I heard.
We often, we tell our employees to work safely, okay? So, if they respond, and typically, we don't have enough information to know what they're responding to, you know, we're not going to take that much time to delay transport or response. We'll typically have two ambulances go, because if that, to help lift, to help do things. Maybe it's worse than what it sounds like. And then, once the patient is taken care of, and the lifting is done, then the second ambulance will come back to the station. But it's also, we tell them to take two ambulances, because if they have a second EMS call, which happens often at the same time, then we want them to respond from there, not, you know, we have a pickup, a squad, we call squad. There was times whenever folks was going in the squad to do that. Well, and then we get it paged out for an ambulance call. What's going to happen? They're going to have to go drive back to the station and get an ambulance. So, what makes more sense? I can do a lot more with the ambulance than I can a pickup. I can't do anything that I can do with an ambulance with a pickup. So, that's why we have two ambulances following around, for safety reasons.
And Ron, that, there's two ambulances going, but there's the rest of the crew is staffing that engine or taking that fire truck, which has all of our rescue equipment.
Right, so they, they're...
That same accident scene, so they're, we're not leaving, we're not leaving one ambulance crew behind to work in NBC, we're taking...
And those two people left in the station. If we do have a fire, the ambulance that's out there, the people at the station, have their gear in the truck, and they meet them at the fire. Again, six people is not a lot of people, folks, when you're talking about taking care of major things.
And that's the other thing that I understood, was that you always dispatch a fire engine to an accident. Is that correct, also?
Yes, for a couple of reasons. One is that it has our jaws alive. The second is...
Fuel, fuel, spill?
Well, in case it catches on fire. But that engine provides us a lot more protection on that highway than an ambulance does. So, if they can mow through that engine to get to us on the scene, because we block more than just right beside the vehicle we're extricated from. We give them enough buffer to not get run over. If they're able to get to us through that engine, then they've earned it.
I guess the only question, and Michael, you know, jump in here if you need to, or whatever. And I think this all boils down to one real question. And that was prior to about the beginning of 2018, that you only had two ambulances. Would that be correct?
No, we've had three ambulances for as long as I can remember.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you have four now?
We have a backup, because as with any vehicle, they break a lot. And so, when we have...
Okay, do you have?
We only carry three licenses. So, if we have, we have an ambulance that has to go into the shop, we transfer the license for that ambulance onto the fourth truck, which is, you know, it's got a lot of wear and tear on it, but, you know, we can manage, I mean, it's still legal as far as taking care of patients.
Okay, yeah, I was told during these different meetings, everything, that you had four. One of them was out of service, and I didn't know, and I didn't ask, was that because it's not running, or whatever? But you, I think you just answered that, right?
Yeah, we had, yeah, we had a period of, what, a month, that two ambulances were in the shop. So, we were down to two ambulances.
Okay, so, back when you had three only, you didn't have the backup, whatever, was it the same situation as now, you had one of them in reserve?
No, we, let me, let me give you a little history lesson. Back, way back in 2007... Back, before, back way back in 2007, before 2007, and we were all volunteers.
Right, right.
And I was the chief. And it took us an hour to respond to a, somebody falling downstairs and hurting himself. And that's whenever we started down the path that, to give us where we are today.
Okay.
Because I was not gonna be responsible for somebody. I can burn a house down, not feel good about it, but I can live with it. Somebody dies because we can't, we don't respond, I can't live with that.
Right.
Yeah. So we've helped, we've had three ambulances for a very long time.
Okay.
Uh, and it's a matter of can we staff? We do have, you know, we have an RN that's, that's, uh, that's an EMT that, that kinda acts in between the, the two levels and we, you know, we have some, some, uh, part-time paramedics. And we, we got some good employees that when we have something big happen, they show up. Chalk Mountain Fire, a lot of these guys were working, you know, they weren't, they didn't get off for a couple, a couple of weeks. You know, we can't, again, we can't schedule our, what's gonna happen. So we, we have a system where we have dedicated employees, some, some don't live in the county, but a great deal of them do, and they show up on their off time during big stuff. I don't get paid unless I'm doing chief work, but I show up on my off time to supplement. Whenever that, whenever they, we get strapped, they call me and, uh, I, I back it up. But then I get up in the next morning and go to work, you know, and I'm getting too old for that.
I understand. I understand. Okay. Next question is, in approximately 2018, somewhere early 2018, you wound up with four ambulances. That your, I think your prior chief maybe went to the commissioner's court, asked for the additional ambulance plus the additional personnel, and did they, did he or the department not present to the court that they would do transfers for the, the hospital in order to offset the cost of that by being able to bill for transfers?
That's not really true. I mean, with, and I, I don't wanna state fact, because, you know, again, I'm old and I don't, I don't necessarily remember real well, but it'd be on the, it'd be on the court records, but we bought a new ambulance to replace the one we have in reserve now, because it was getting old.
Okay.
And we made the decision. Is that right? We made the decision to keep it because we were having a lot of issues with these newer vehicles, emission stuff, whatever those, I don't know all the times, I'm not that smart, but a lot of stuff was going wrong with them and taking them out of service, so we, we did, made the decision to keep that fourth ambulance to, to back up and knowing that it doesn't get used a lot, but it does get used whenever we have to take one out of service.
Now, Mark and I, we did, Mark and I went to Kat and we sold her a bill of goods, let me tell you, we did, and I was out there with him.
Okay.
I mean, about doing all the transfers and being able to take on everything and hire more people and to the best of our ability, like I told you all the other day, we did bring on more people and then we wound up losing five people and we didn't live up to the obligations. The court didn't do it. Mark and I sat there with Kat and, and promised things that we didn't fulfill.
Well, yeah, my, my understanding, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know the whole story, because I was not aware that there was a serious problem until just a, a few weeks ago or a couple of months ago or something like that, when I got a call from Michael one afternoon, uh, desperately trying to get a patient transferred. But my understanding was that from about 2018 to 2020 or something like that for a couple of years, that the fire department did in fact make the transfers, but then COVID hit and I know that that just screwed everybody up. And it, it just, now that COVID is over, I think we agree COVID is over, we haven't been wearing masks for some time now.
It's not over what it's pretending, not pretending it is, what it ain't.
Whatever, whatever.
I'm sorry. I can't talk it out loud, don't I?
But it just ended and then when we asked why, when we really needed a transfer, we got this excuse, this excuse, this excuse, and then we're going, okay, what's the real story? If somebody talked to us and explained to us in detail that we can understand why it happened and we haven't gotten that yet, so.
So, so two errors happened back when the agreement occurred. One was promises were made that, that were not really prepared to keep, and I was on, I was on the transfer wagon myself.
Okay.
Steve, was there an interlocal agreement?
There was never, never anything in writing.
That's what I think that we need to be looking at.
Right, there's-
Figure out an interlocal agreement that we both agree on, that's written and we both understand. No more, you know, verbal stuff, you know?
He said, she said.
Right. Let's, let's get it on paper and let's do it right and let's figure out what we need to do.
And I'm for that, you know, and that-
That's kinda what you were saying.
And everything, and everything I do now, you know, in business then is done in writing, because, you know, my words is good, my word is good, but, you know, if I get in a bind, I may have to back up a word. If, if you got a written agreement, then it, and it, by the way, that doesn't really change anything, because all written agreements are cancelable with notice, right? But at least it's in writing what you agreed to.
Well, the, the problem is, and Trey understands this as well as I do in, in the court, we're not always gonna be here. Yeah, our word is good, our handshake is good.
Right.
But then when you're gone, somebody's gonna say, well, uh, he may have made that deal, but it, it ain't my deal. And so they're not bound by it, so that's, that's an issue.
That's my point, Mark.
Yes. Um, let me ask this, like I said, anybody speak up if, if, if I'm off base, but when we really, really need a transfer, we've had a situation just recently where, uh, we had someone who, who needed to go to Fort Worth to Harris or wherever. It was not good weather, so we could not get a, a, an air ambulance. And we called and, and I'm pointing fingers and just telling facts, uh, we called the, the fire station and we were told, no, they're not gonna do it. And so we, we did finally get, uh, Texas EMS, but there was that delay for probably an hour, Kat probably knows of how long it was, and I don't know whether that transfer, that patient, uh, wound up with a good outcome or not, but when, when it did not, when, when we need it, we need it, and we've gotten to the point where we're told no regardless of what circumstances are. If we say, we can't get an air ambulance because there's a storm, there's, you know, it's, it's the, the weather or they're not available, we need to get this person out quick. And if you've got an ambulance or two sitting at the fire station, literally blocks from the hospital, why should we have to wait 30 minutes to an hour or more to get somebody out and then they don't make it? So, you know, and y'all, I know y'all can't make the decision right here, I'm just throwing it out as, as a question, can't we at least do something like that if it really is serious? And we don't, again, we don't need to be second guessed, we don't have, we don't need someone that's an EMT or a paramedic overriding an MD or a DO.
I wanna say, I can't be quiet.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna say one more thing, and I'm not disagreeing with you at all, Ron. In fact, I'm agreeing totally with you. If it's an emergency situation, if it's a, God forbid, a life or death situation, we need to get that person where they need to be, if to the best of our ability. If we've got trucks sitting there, we need to, we need to go with it. With that said, we, you know, we depend upon the professionalism and the, and the, uh, the knowledge of the doctor to call it an emergency. So, you know, if it's called in to us as an emergency by that professional, I feel like that's what it is and it needs to be handled as such. Um, but it's, it, I've also been told there's been times where it's been called in and it, and I'm not telling my guys to second guess doctors at all, because that's, that won't, that doesn't need to happen, okay?
I understand.
First and foremost, but it needs to be an emergency situation, in my opinion. And we cannot, in my opinion, if we're available, deny that. That's my thought. We cannot.
And you're right, and again, it goes, it goes back to what I said in the beginning, you guys need to figure this out, because our folks, I, I don't like putting them in a position where they have to make a decision. And unfortunately, it's history, but there was some manipulation of paperwork done, uh, that caused them to take transfers or, or whatever. And paperwork changed. And I don't have any facts, I don't have any evidence, but paperwork changed in order to make it fit the criteria. So we don't need to be in that business. We don't need to be in the business, we, we need a, we need a transfer service that will satisfy your level, your level one trauma and that will make, guarantee you a truck here. Whenever, uh, the chief was talking about needing nine people, that's to guarantee that you have a truck there. Maybe there's a compromise in between. I, I think, I think the hospital should have some skin in the game, though, personally. Again, I'm trying to not be a politician, because I don't wanna be. I don't even like politicians.
Come on now, you remember, Jeff?
Oh!
Come on now.
No, uh, so, so, but it's, it, we, we should not have our folks put in, in that position. We need, we need to be instructed on what we need to do and we, and we'll take a, you know, write a policy that'll fit that. The medical director will buy into it and so we're all, we're all on the same page.
Well, I, go ahead.
I, I'd just like to ask Michael to clarify something here for everyone. What's the procedure when we look at transferring a patient?
If it's an ER transfer, the ER doctor has determined that that patient needs to go to a higher level of care. And at that point, he has contacted a doctor at a higher level of care that has accepted that patient, that has agreed that that patient needs to go to a higher level of care. So therefore, the transfer, they can't go by private car, they have to go by ambulance at that point, so.
So you have two doctors saying, hey, yes, this person needs to be-
Needs to be transferred to a higher level of care.
So, but it doesn't necessarily make it emergent. So let's throw that word out there, so everybody gets chew on it a bit. It doesn't make it emergent.
It might not make it life threatening.
Right. Maybe they have a procedure they're gonna have done tomorrow.
That's fine.
Right. And so that's why we're saying, you know, that, that for us to be in the-
Steve, that's not fair.
No, I'm not, I'm just-
Because when we transfer somebody, you don't know when that procedure's gonna happen?
I, I was only-
It might not happen until tomorrow, but the transferring physician doesn't have any control over what happens when that patient gets to the receiving hospital.
Right. I, I was only making the point that they, they were putting it all in one basket, right?
That was COVID, that was a little different.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, that's, that's why I'm saying, we don't need to, we don't need to be in the decision-making business.
Understand, but when you cite an example like that, that was during COVID, that was a very different situation, that's not occurring today, that's not really apples to apples. And, and, um, you know, one of the problems is how do we define emergency?
Right.
Right? If you have a condition or a disease or a disorder or an injury that is potentially life or limb threatening, Medicare calls that an emergency.
Right.
So, you know, it doesn't need to be in the next hour, three hours, six hours, 12 hours. There isn't a timeline on it that I've ever found in any of Medicare's guidelines. They, they leave that wide open. And so that's one of our, and, and I, I, I see both sides. I, I wear too many hats and it's very challenging. The problem is, in my heart as a physician, the patient should come first and too often in this debate over the last few years, the patient hasn't come first. And that's why these boards have to get this figured out.
Right.
The patient has to come first.
And that's, that's why I said, I was only clarifying that there's a whole lot of different kind of transfers.
Right.
I wasn't, not trying to-
It's, it's different when you're picking somebody up at a nursing home and taking them for their EGD and bringing them back.
Yes.
Not an ambulance transfer.
Uh, so, I just, I just ask that we figure out how to do this where we're not in the, we're not, we're not in that business of making decisions on whether or not we're gonna transfer a patient. Um, and like I say, there's, we gotta figure out financially how to make it work and, and logistically how to make it work. Again, I, I'm in, I've been in for 36 years and, um, but I would like to walk away someday and feel good about the system, right? I don't feel good about the system.
I have-
Yes, sir.
Another question. Do I understand you to say that on your shift, okay, you're gonna only have five people per shift?
Six.
Six.
Mm-hmm. But it takes, it, for, for an engine company to go to a structured fire, you should have five people. At least one person that follows in an ambulance. But we operate different than that. We, we, they, they, they operate on a wing and prayer sometimes, whenever we have multiple calls and they're depending on volunteers. So we have a system to check and balance to, to see, so they can see who, what, what volunteers they have coming. But it's not a guarantee, that's the problem, it's not a guarantee. And it's becoming harder and harder. I got some really, really dedicated guys. I got a guy that wears a, a law enforcement office, officer uniform and then takes that off and puts the fire department uniform on. He was at Chalk Fa, Chalk Mountain Fire in one of the two capacities for at least 18 hours of that time. So we got some good people and, and we, and we've added some and we, and we're still looking around, you know? Anybody here wanna volunteer? The number, no, I'm sorry. Uh, but we do, we, 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 we wanna do what's best for the community and we wanna, we wanna be good stewards of what the county commissioner's court is entrusting us with. Looking at those numbers, I, I can see how somebody could spin that around and make it look like somebody's getting paid too much money, but that's not really the issue. They're not, by the way, compared to other agencies, but that's not really the issue. The issue is, how do we get to the place where you guys, the hospital, the patients, let's forget about the hospital, the patients have a vehicle that will transport them guaranteed? That's where we need to be. Right? And, um, I don't know how to get there, but I ask that y'all figure it out.
And I should tell the public before we started, after we get through debate and discussion and argument or whatever, then we'll have the public comments. Sorry, I should've said that up front, but I forgot.
I guess I have a couple of questions. How long does it usually take to transfer a patient, uh, to and from?
We, it's, we average about three hours, you know, unless you're going to Cleveland or Granbury, something like that.
Could you have some kind of special protocol into place where you let your volunteers know that, hey, we've got a transfer going on? Maybe have an all hands on deck kind of reaction, just so you kinda get the feel of where you stand as a department?
We have that system. We, we have a, we have a, a system that they get a, a notification on their phone that, that they're, that they're doing something, whatever it is.
Okay.
So we have a system. But again, I, I would love to be able to tell all my volunteers, you're gonna be scheduled for this time and, and if you don't like it, you can hit the road, because, but if I do that, then I won't have any volunteers left, you know? They, they give it their time and they, and they give a lot of time. Um, but to be able to say a hundred percent we're good, you know, and, and to do that and then try to fill the, fill the gap and wait on that, and we've already gone past that 30 minutes also, so it, it really doesn't resolve anything. We, we do have it, we, we look at it, you know, I, I spend a lot of waking hours looking at, looking at and thinking about, how can we do better? You know, but the fact is, we, we have what we have and it's, it's a, it's a limited staff for the only fire department in Somerville County. Hood County has nine?
Nine volunteers.
Yeah. And, and they have a, a, any of this department, a company that just started, just added their fifth truck, has five trucks, that's 10 people on, on duty, plus, uh, administrator and a QA person, and, you know, these people are not making ambulance calls, but they're backup for those ambulances. The people we have that are admin, that are, are certified, they're backup for emergencies. But if you take all your backup out, you have, you don't have a backup and you're just stuck.
Michael asked a question the other day and I didn't have the answer. How many times do we actually go to level zero? I said, I see it on my phone, but I can't give you the exact number. I believe it's maybe once or twice a month, but maybe I overexaggerated. Y'all?
I know we've, we've done, we, I can recall just off the top of my head, twice this this month.
Because I know I see it each time, but he asked me about how many times in a year, and I, I couldn't answer that.
We've had two different cases where we had two motorcycle wrecks at the same time this month. And then a, a medical emergency at somebody's house in town at the same time.
Do you, do you call?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Max.
Do you call for, uh, I'll try to.
Mutual aid?
I'll think what I've.
Mutual aid?
Mutual aid, yes.
Yes.
Do you call for them? How often would you do that? Like monthly, or six months, or three months?
We, we, we try to minimize that because we, we were doing it a lot during COVID, and, and a lot, uh, in the last couple of years, and it got to where they were never available. You know, because you, you call me to come and stand by, and, and I never do anything enough times, and I figure out how to not to do it anymore. It's, it's just human nature, you know? Uh, but we do have, we do have a good relationship with Texas EMS, and they do help us out. Uh, and, you know, and, and when we can, we help them out. We just don't have the, we don't have the ability to back other counties up like they do us because we're alone. We're on our island, just us. We're, we're 20 minutes from our help.
Steve, for folks that are out in the audience or whatnot that may not understand the levels you're talking about, explain the levels, what you're talking about, level zero and whatnot.
So, so yeah, so level, level zero, we have six people on shift, on shift. If they get to the point where they are, um, they, they have expended those six people, and there's no reserve, then that we go to level zero. That tells the volunteers that, hey, I need to start, you know, getting ready and, and be prepared to, to respond. I'd hope you guys are already ready to respond, but, but, you know, it, it gives us a heads up that, that they are strapped. Because, you know, we're in a system now where, to be honest, you know, I, I, for the, for my first 20 years of, of service, I was in a position where volunteers were it, I was it. I spent a lot of time, uh, making ambulance calls in the middle of the night, and, and I enjoy not having to get up and, and our employees having to, you know, be up in, in the middle of the night and may not have to give up. Now, sometimes I get woke up anyway because I forget to turn my pager down to the point where it doesn't wake me, but, but I do, because I, if we have something big, I still got to get up and go, you know? Six is not, six people is not enough to handle any kind of significant emergency. It's not. It's absolutely not. A structure fire, you try to handle it with six people, it's, the, the, the rules require, you got an engineer, you got two people that go in, you got two people that go out, and you have somebody in command. There you go. You're, you're spent. That's all six. So anything past that, we have, we depend on the volunteers to show up. And, and by the way, you know, wearing an air pack and wearing heavy gear and doing heavy work, they don't last very long. Uh, some of them try, I think, but, uh, we don't let them get to the point where they're going to have a heart attack. So, you know, we gotta have, we gotta have backup. Was that sufficient?
Do you have anything, oh, Brian, that you want to add or discuss, or?
At the base of this, we've tried to explain this, that our staffing needs have increased since 2018, and we're just trying to keep up, stay out of the curve. And we, we, we've got one of the strongest, best service we've ever provided that I can over. And we've got dedicated employees, volunteers, people around, and we're doing nice stuff in this curve, this growth curve that we see coming. And we just do not have the resources to do that and maintain the service of transfers all the time.
Yeah, and, and to the point of, you know, we're, we're under 10,000 people in the county, but we could double that easily with tourism at any given time. So it's hard to say how many, how many we're really serving, because a lot of wrecks we work on the highway is not county residents.
Between March and October, we, we expand at 1.5 to 2 million. That's what passed through our gates, through our, uh, population, county, whatever you want to say.
City, county limits.
From March, you can't, there you go. From March 1st, October 1st, we run about 1.5, 2 million. Well, anything else for Steve or Brian at all?
I would like to say something.
You bet.
You mentioned a little while ago that there was some enmity between the two departments. And I, I would just like to point out that we have something in common here. None of us want to lose a patient on our watch.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's, that's where we're coming from, too.
Yes, ma'am.
We're concerned about Hood County, having, taking half an hour to get here when we've got a patient that critically needs to be transferred to Fort Worth or wherever. We don't know what else we can do about that.
Yes, ma'am. It's the same as we can't schedule 911 calls, you know? We can't, we can't predict when we're going to be at level zero. It's, it's, I'm asking for help. I'm, I'm not disputing anything y'all said.
Yeah. Steve, I agree with, I was going to say something earlier, and somebody else needed to speak up, and I kind of forgot about it. Um, I agree with you that nobody, whether it's an MD or whoever, needs to be changing paperwork to make something fit. That's wrong. Maybe we can work on getting that changed or, or whatever, try to make it not happen again. But at the same time, when we can't get an air ambulance because we need somebody out quick, we don't need the, uh, fire department sitting there with an ambulance available and saying no, no matter what, and that's what it's gotten to.
I agree.
That's got an end. That's, that has an end, folks.
I think I said already, we, I don't want, I don't want our people making the decision.
And I've said this to people before, there's very few things that I will not do to protect our hospital. Just about, just about cheat or steal or whatever to protect this hospital.
Just on record?
And that includes, that includes protecting the patients, obviously.
Yes.
So, uh, if we have to do something, I'm on board with doing whatever we have to do to make sure that we've got transport for those people who need it. And if that means us getting an ambulance of our own or whatever, I'm willing to look at that, and I don't know what the other board will do. But we, we've got to fix this. This can't stay the way it is.
And you heard me say, you know, there, maybe there's a compromise. Maybe we share the burden, you know? I mean, I, I don't think anything should be left unthought and unsaid to, to resolve this, but it has to be resolved. We cannot continue down this road.
I got something to say.
Steve, I too. I have, I just want to look forward to collaboration between the two of us, and I think it will work great. Our hospital's doing a fantastic job. You are doing good work for Somerville County, and we want Somerville County to be at one.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Well, pooey.
What she said, just say what she said.
A little bit extra.
Okay.
I've got three nephews that are absolutely first-class young men. They're all firemen. They're all EMTs. They all work in California. When this started kind of boiling up, because I know nothing about, you know, the, the other side of it, I went over and asked Wade to, to take a little bit of time, and he's kind enough to introduce me to Judge Chambers, and we talked, and I learned an awful lot about it. But it still comes back to me, and thank you guys for taking that time. But the bottom line is, we're all on the same side. When, and I know everybody's got two sides of this, but when we're hearing that, uh, in the ambulance, people are hearing bad things about the hospital, they're.
And vice versa.
Fair enough.
Yes, sir.
And that's got to stop.
Yes, sir.
We can't have that sort of, uh, argument going on. All of, we, all of us need to take a step back, kind of think about what we're saying and what we're doing. This can be resolved, it can be resolved, maybe with a little bit of extra money, but all this argument back and forth needs to stop. Because the bottom line is, if somebody dies in our ER, that's on all of us.
Yes, sir.
We can't have that. It's, that's bad enough, but the legal consequences of that could be devastating to the county. And we need to try harder and with a better attitude, both sides, but it needs to start now.
I agree. And that's, that's what I've said. I hope y'all didn't hear anything different than that. I want, I want to fix it.
Fair enough.
And I want to fix it now.
One last thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there an age limit to be a volunteer fireman?
I thought you were going to tell me how handsome I was. Dang it. Uh, yes, ma'am, 18.
I mean, on the other side.
Oh! I'm, I'm 60, and I ain't yet done, and where's Michael at? How old are you, Michael?
I'm in my 70s.
You're not going to tell us how old you are? Okay. Uh, so no, there, there's something that everybody can do. Um, you know, you may not be able to go in and fight a fire, but you may be able to hold somebody's hand whenever they've lost a loved one, you know? There's all, all kinds of opportunities, for sure.
Anything else for Steve at all? Brian at all? All right. Let's talk, uh, let's talk finances right quick. Here again, this is Danny talking, this is not the court talking, all right? Last year in the budget, when we went through what we went through, you know, we tried to readjust many different, a lot of this is for the public, so they'll understand also where we're at, okay? And for the whole board. We tried to adjust as many departments as we could with the pay raises, pay grades, okay? Trying to get, or not hearing? Uh-oh, that's unusual. Can you hear me now? I usually talk so loud that everybody can hear me. All right. Anyhow, what we're saying was, during last year's budget cycle, which we're getting ready to start that in May or June, we, you know, we tried to reallocate many different regroup, different departments, elected officials, department heads, all the way, the sheriff's department, fire department, to get hopefully salaries in line, okay? Our insurances went up 14% last year, and then on top of that realignment, we did 5% for everybody. So where that put us last year, for the first time in nine years, was it put us $776,317 deficit budget, okay? Now, we agreed to do that this year, but as you can see, it's unsustainable, because with the legislators, we can only go three and a half percent on what we can income off property taxes and abhorrent taxes. So sales tax, hopefully, will help us, uh, on many different issues, because, you know, that can be used for the sheriff's department, fire department first, things like that.
We already used some of it.
We are. We, sheriff's department, we've used some, fire department, I think it's 180,000, I think, uh, but I could be wrong. And the reason I get here is whatever our solution is going to be, and however we work this out, we all live off the same taxpayers. Y'all have the same taxpayers, we have the same taxpayers. So however we look at this and decide how we can try to alleviate this pain and this problem, right now, the current budget, and Michael, maybe you can prove me wrong on this as we work our way through it, you know, what we currently have, we're tapped out. It's money-wise, okay? Maybe you think our services are not being met to 100%. That's something we've got to look at, all right? As, as a court, as a group, as discussions, but, and here again, I'm not speaking for the court, but you know, I'm wide open to any ideas, whether it be equipment, whether it be manpower, whether it be money, I don't know. I figure there's a solution there, but I don't know at this point what it is, okay? I'm not saying we can't do it, but right now, I don't, I don't see it happening tomorrow, let's put it that way. Does that make sense? And by no means am I trying to upset anybody in either direction. It's just when it comes down to finances and economics, and if we can't do what we currently have, then we'll have trouble figuring out how we move forward. Comment? I see it. I see the wheels turning. Come on.
On the last page.
Come on.
Item number two on the last page, around the last three.
Yep. I don't have that, but I'll take your word for it. I trust you, Max.
279,000, $137.
Yes.
That's what, lost revenue that you could be making.
That's what I'm told is lost revenue. I don't have any proof of that being lost revenue. I'm told that is supposedly lost revenue. If we had the manpower to run them, then that's lost revenue. If I don't have the manpower, like what Mr., uh, I'm sorry, Kathy pointed out the other day, you're paying your manpower anyhow, no matter what. That is true, but the manpower is sitting there to do many other jobs. So that is lost if I were able to do it.
With an average of one point calls, 1.9 calls per what week is it?
Per day.
Per day.
Okay.
And I think that's debatable, too, Max, but we'd have to dig into our numbers. I was trying not to go down that path and argue that, but I'm, I'm willing to argue that.
Those are your numbers.
Right.
That's what we got off the, from November through February, your numbers. Michael?
2021, fire department ran 1,360 total calls. 700, over 730 of those were EMS calls. Over 100 of those, 100 of those were vehicle accidents. 203 were transfers, and another 324 were fire calls, rescue calls, hazmat calls, fire alarms, assist, et cetera. So.
That was 2021?
Correct.
And you weren't making any runs for us, though, were you?
That was including 203 transfers.
From the hospital?
Correct.
Well, if we could do it then, why can't we do it now?
Yep.
Because our, between 2021 and 2022, we had two or three vacancies, and then we lost five people in three weeks because they're going to other places for more money.
That's documented and provable.
So that's why in 2022, in February, we, we, I emailed the hospital, Michael, Kat, and Dr. Mossick, after talking with the court, and let them know that we, we cannot continue to do these transfers because we were critically low-staffing at that point. And we still left some emergent stuff on, on the table, that we would try to, we would do those the best we could.
And what we did in April and May of '22 is we tried to realign the best we could. We froze, what, three or five positions? And we took those salaries and poured them back into our current group to keep them active, and then start building staff back up. When we currently got back to full staff was when? First part of 2023. I don't know when we actually finally got there.
February, March? February, March-ish, February?
Okay, the question would be, if you had the budget and you were paying those five individuals, and they left for whatever reason, the budget was still there, and you've restaffed to the, to that original level, correct?
But it took us about eight months to get there.
Okay. But the, the point is.
Right now, we're back to that level, yes. And you're wondering right now why we can't do it. But yeah, the last, why not?
In 2021, we generated less than $200,000 with our transfer service.
Question.
That, that was not one transfer truck. That was two to three transfer trucks running to make to keep, because it was COVID. We were running non-stop trying, and that's another reason we, we kept the fourth truck as a reserve, because we were just running the wheels off these trucks. Our guys are crossing county lines while one's going out somewhere else. Uh, so even, even then, we weren't, you know, the peak of our transfers, we generated less than $200,000 in revenue.
I think a lot of that can be attributed to, to the non-collective practice. And that's not you think, that's a court thing.
That's a court thing, yeah. That's, yeah, that's not their fault.
But I mean, if I got to, if I was able to take a bullet and you transfer me, you're not going to get paid to die. If you don't go after the patient for that amount, you're not going to get paid anything for that, so you're losing.
And a lot of those transfers weren't from home, they weren't just necessarily from the hospital. They were, I mean, they're, they knew we were at zero, too, because we couldn't get them out, and so they were taking them to other places because if they needed respiratory or cardiac or something, we didn't have.
No, that's not, that's not including from the home. That's, those are still generated as 911 calls.
Should we consider those 911 calls?
On the flip side, our 911 revenue was almost 300,000.